My name is Truckay Oven, and I'll be presiding over this evening's joint hearing of the Malden Planning Board and the Malden Council City Ordinance Committee. Today, August 11th, 2021. First thing we're going to do, as we do each meeting, is I'm going to read a notice for everyone, and then we will have a roll call of the Planning Board and then the City Council Ordinance Committee. For those in attendance, under the provision of the open meeting law, attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts, formerly MATV. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. Thank you, and if we can have our roll call, and I'd remind everyone, please lean in and speak into the microphone when you talk this evening. We had received some feedback that it was hard to hear people on the on the Urban Urban Media Arts recording. So if we could start with Towadage, please.
Towadage, Gabrielle Lasse, Planning Board.
Patrick Fitzgerald, Planning Board.
Diane Chuhah, Planning Board.
Ken Anzunuchi, Planning Board.
Truckay Oven, Planning Board.
Michelle Romero, City Planner.
Eric Mukush, Planning Board.
Paton, Planning Board.
Eric Henry.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it over to Craig. The microphones are set up on the tables, so let me, give me a second, Craig. Oh, Councilor Spatafora. Okay.
I'd like to introduce the, sorry. Malden City Council Ordinance Committee, Starwood Councilor Mallie.
Ryan Mallie, Ward 4, City Councilor.
Councilor Stephen Winslow, Councilor Large.
Peg Froh, Ward 1, City Councilor.
Councilor Craig Spatafora, at large. I get the opportunity as a co-sponsor to first thank everybody for coming out. This was a paper that, quite frankly, was probably long overdue, and I want to thank the mayor for allowing us to be part of this process, myself, Councilor Winslow, Real Louise, Evan, and Michelle Romero met many times during the COVID year and went through many documents, and it was a great exercise, and there was a lot of give and go. And now we're at the process now, we can turn it into an ordinance and actually see this paper become our ordinance. I now would like to introduce the mayor, Gary Christensen, to come address the joint hearing to talk about this important paper. All rise for the mayor, please.
Thank you. Now, only if the constituents I dealt with earlier treated me the same way. Good evening to you all. It's not often that I appear before you, but this proposal, Malden's First Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, represents an important step forward for our city, especially given the lasting impacts of the public health crisis we experienced this past year. This paper is the culmination of two years of exhaustive investigations, conversations with community members and organizations, including Mass Senior Action Council, in numerous, numerous iterations. As you know, inclusionary zoning will require a percentage of housing units in new residential developments to be set aside as below-market affordable housing. From the outset, we knew that if this were to work in Malden, it needed to be designed with our housing market and housing needs in mind. To achieve that, we worked with Levine Planning Strategies and Colliers International to conduct a feasibility study, which was funded by contributions from the city, the former Malden Redevelopment Authority, Malden Housing Authority, and a grant from East Boston Savings Bank. More importantly, we formed an advisory group that worked with the consultants and met regularly despite the challenges of COVID-19. This group was comprised of city staff, MRA staff, city councilors Craig Spatafora and Steve Winslow, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board members. The study included a thorough review of Malden's housing needs, a market analysis, interviews with market rate and affordable housing developers and owners, and a financial model to test the impacts of inclusionary requirements on prototypical developments. Our goal was to develop a policy that would maximize the potential for new affordable units without preventing new construction altogether. After numerous drafts, the advisory group settled on three alternatives, which were presented to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board members on January 20th. The trust voted unanimously to endorse Alternative 2, which is the basis of the proposal that you will see tonight. As I previously mentioned, adopting an inclusionary zoning ordinance will be a huge step forward for Malden as it will ensure that new development will provide affordable housing opportunities for all residents. Of course, we have a lot more work to do, but this ordinance is a crucial piece of our efforts to make long-term investments that will preserve our community and protect our neighbors. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to working together to move this legislation forward. I will now turn it over to Evans Petrini, who was a driving force in this process and who will present an overview of the feasibility study and walk through the proposed ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone. I'm gonna pass out some slides and set this. Okay, thank you. Did everyone, oh, it's still going around. I'll wait. Everyone have one? All right, great. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Evans Petrini. I'm the senior planner and policy manager at the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Tonight, I'm going to walk us through the inclusionary zoning proposal in front of you. So in very broad terms, and I'm going to repeat some of the information that the mayor just gave you, but in very broad terms, inclusionary zoning is a requirement on new residential development to set aside a certain percentage of units as below market-rate affordable housing. Essentially, it acts as an internal subsidy where the market-rate units are used to support the affordable ones. However, there is no one-size-fits-all approach to inclusionary zoning, so the requirements vary greatly from city to city. The questions we had to answer when crafting the ordinance were, what kinds of projects are subject to inclusionary requirements? What percentage of units are required to be affordable? What are the income limits? What is the level of affordability? And are there alternative methods of compliance, like paying a fee in lieu of building the affordable unit on site? So this proposal is the result of two years of work, beginning with the completion of the city's housing needs assessment in June of 2019, which highlighted the city's significant unmet affordable housing needs. In response, the mayor proposed a series of strategies that included the establishment of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the adoption of an inclusionary zoning ordinance. These two strategies represent crucial pieces of institutional infrastructure, establishing dedicated mechanisms by which the city can create, preserve, and support affordable housing. The trust was established by city ordinance in November 2019, began meeting in April of 2020. The trust's mission is to maintain and create opportunities for affordable housing so Malden remains a vibrant, diverse, and inclusive community where residents and families can stay and thrive. We began developing the trust's first-ever action plan in July 2020. The planning process included a review of Malden's affordable housing landscape, six focus groups, an online survey, and a community meeting that was held this past January. The action plan was adopted in June and lays out the trust's goals and priorities for the next five years, including advocating for the adoption of an inclusionary zoning ordinance. When we first presented the mayor's affordable housing strategies back in 2019, we explained that the first step in developing an inclusionary zoning ordinance is to conduct a financial feasibility study to make sure our proposal will maximize the potential for new affordable units without making new development financially infeasible because any percentage of zero units is zero. So we formed an advisory committee to guide the development of the study. Levine Planning Strategies and Colliers International were selected to conduct the study, which was funded by contributions from the city, MRA, Malden Housing Authority, and a grant from East Boston Savings Bank. Work on the study began last May. The consultants reviewed existing inclusionary zoning literature and market data for Malden, conducted stakeholder interviews with market rate and affordable housing developers, property owners, and service providers. Then they created model pro formas for four hypothetical developments and tested the impacts of potential requirements on each typology. So after a few iterations, the advisory group and our consultants developed the three alternatives. Alternative 1, 15% affordable at 80% of the area median income with no incentives. Alternative 2 is 15% affordable at 50% AMI with a density bonus and parking adjustment. And Alternative 3, 20% affordable at 80% AMI with a density bonus and parking adjustment. So according to the model, all three alternatives are not so onerous that they would halt construction altogether. We presented the study and our findings to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board in January, and they overwhelmingly voted to approve Alternative 2, which is the basis of our proposal. So the ordinance will apply to projects that create eight or more units. 15% of units will be set aside for households making 50% AMI or less if it's a rental project and 80% AMI or less if it's homeownership. Developers will be allowed one additional market rate unit for every required affordable unit, regardless of density controls. Affordable units will require one parking space per unit as opposed to one space per bedroom, and developers may pay a fee of $300,000 per required unit in lieu of providing the unit on site. So why did we choose Alternative 2? Since all of the alternatives looked to be financially feasible, it became a policy question, and the key differences between the three were the targeted income limits. So we tried to identify the greatest need and how this ordinance could be most impactful. Alternative 2 requires affordable rental units to be set aside for households making up to 50% of the area median income. From our housing needs assessment, we know that a full 40% of households in Malden meet that requirement. And about 78% of them are cost-burdened, which means they pay more than 30% of their income on housing. That means approximately 1/3 of all households are at significant risk of displacement, and as housing costs rise, that risk becomes even greater. By creating more permanent affordable housing, we can provide those households with sustainable opportunities to stay in the community. So now I'm going to briefly review each section of the ordinance. I'm not going to read all of the text, but I'll call out the main points in each section. So the first section simply describes the purpose of the ordinance, to improve housing stability, mitigate the impacts of new residential development, and maintain an economically integrated community. Broadly speaking, projects that result in eight or more units are subject to inclusionary requirements. This section details all of the scenarios that would trigger these requirements and prevents scenarios where a developer may try to avoid compliance, like a phased development. Most of the applicable projects already require a special permit under our current zoning, so this does not create an extra barrier or duplicate processes. Section J lays out the additional information needed to grant a special permit for an inclusionary development, but it does require a special permit. Section D simply states that 15% of total units will be affordable, not counting those allowed under the incentive section, which I will go over next. So the incentives. There are two incentives offered to all inclusionary developments. One additional unit is allowed for every required affordable unit, and one parking space is required for each affordable unit provided, as opposed to one space per bedroom. We intentionally worded the parking adjustments so that if a developer provides more than the required 15% of affordable units, the additional units, the additional affordable units, will also benefit from the reduced parking. However, that does not apply to the density bonus. The Development Standards section ensures that the affordable units are not smaller, less desirable, or of poorer quality than the market-rate units. It also ensures that the timing of construction, that these are constructed at the same time as the market-rate units. It is intended that the affordable units will be built on-site, but the ordinance does provide flexibility, which was recommended in our feasibility study. Affordable units can be built off-site but only in the same neighborhood, or the developer can pay a fee of $300,000 per unit to the Affordable Housing Trust in lieu of building the units. If the required number of units results in a fraction, the difference will be realized as a cash payment to the trust, and we are not allowing the conveyance of land or buildings as an alternative form of compliance. So eligibility. In a rental project, the required affordable units will be reserved for households making up to 50% AMI. Any additional affordable units beyond the 15% can go up to 80% AMI and still benefit from that parking reduction. For ownership projects, required units are reserved for households making up to 80%, and additional units can go up to 100% AMI. We cannot require all of the units to go to current Malden residents, but developers need to include a preference for Malden residents in their lottery and marketing plan. So this section defines affordability such that housing costs do not exceed 30% of household income. Affordable units will remain affordable in perpetuity, and the trust has the option to buy the units if no qualified purchaser can be found. So Section J, the Administration section. This section outlines the documents needed to apply for a special permit, including lottery and marketing plans and a draft of the legal documents that ensure affordability. Occupancy permits will not be issued until the affordability restrictions are recorded with the Registry of Deeds. And Section K states that the affordable units must qualify for inclusion on the city's subsidized housing inventory. Section L, inclusionary developments with rental units must submit annual statements and owners excuse me, and owners of an affordable homeownership unit must notify the city before listing the property for sale to ensure compliance. The city will develop standards and procedures with regard to monitoring those units and making sure that they are in compliance. And Section M requires the city to undertake a study every five years to evaluate the performance of the inclusionary zoning ordinance and make recommendations for revisions if necessary. This study would be similar to the study that we just completed, but it's a check-in every five years to make sure that it's working correctly and find ways to improve it. And the final section just reiterates the definitions of affordable housing unit and inclusionary development as they appear earlier in the ordinance. And just to recap the major provisions, so the ordinance will apply to projects that create eight or more units. 15% of units will be set aside for households making 50% AMI or less if it's a rental project and 80% AMI or less if it's homeownership. Developers will be allowed one additional market rate unit for every required affordable unit, regardless of density controls. Affordable units will require one parking space per unit as opposed to one space per bedroom, and developers may pay a fee of $300,000 per required unit in lieu of providing the unit on site. So thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and I will be here to answer any questions. And I'll just leave that up so we have the
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Petrini. I have a couple of questions. If you could elaborate more on the density incentive, if you could work through an example, because the first, one time when I read through it, I thought the incentive was they could do one per development, but then after rereading it a few times, it sounded like whatever the number of affordable units are, they can add to that.
That's correct.
So the second one is that, so if there's 30 units, they need to provide four and a half that do half of it in lieu, so it'd be $150,000 donation to the trust fund, and then four additional, they could do four additional units, so that would be 34 units.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Can you describe how that would impact the density? Because I saw that there's that section about developmental standards. Is the density impact on the affordable housing units or on the whole 34-unit project?
Sorry, say that, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I saw in one of the sections that there's developmental standards, and all the affordable units would be the same in the timing, the mix, and the quality of the workmanship and things like that. What I'm struggling with is connecting how density is going to be impacted. So if you could explain how, because we're calling it a density incentive. I'm not connecting how the density is impacted. Is it just on the four affordable units or is it on the whole project? In the example I gave, 34 units.
So the additional units would be included in the same project. I'm not sure if I'm understanding exactly what you're asking. Let me
Okay, if you want to. I'm just trying to put it all together and just see how, is it just, because with, as I understand it, the parking incentive,
Right.
there's only one spot required for the affordable units. So I can clearly see how that unit will only have one parking spot where the others will depend on the number of bedrooms. All right, I get that.
Correct, yeah.
I'm not connecting how the density is impacted.
Well, it would, so there are four, there would be four additional units, so all of those market-rate units would still follow all of the parking requirements and all of those other requirements.
So the density impact would be on the whole project, the inclusionary development, not just on the inclusionary units?
Yes. Yes, it would, yeah, it would be on the whole, the whole project. That's correct.
Okay. If you want to add to it, Michelle?
Yeah, I think I could explain some additional information. So when density, when we're talking about density in this ordinance, density bonus, we're talking about the dimensional control density? So typically, the lot area determines how many units can be built on a lot. There's a basic minimum for a multifamily, for example, which is 18,750 square feet. That's the lot size. But for every unit, and using that as an example, a multifamily dwelling up to three stories, for every unit, there needs to be 1,500 square feet of lot area. So that's how we determine whether or not the proposal complies with zoning in terms of density. So for, you know, an easy example, a 15, I shouldn't use 15. Let me, let me use a different, different number here. So if there is a lot that is 30,000 square feet, it meets the minimum, 18,750, so that's the lot area. But typically, we're approached and we're asked, how many units can I put on that? So we look at the density requirements, and for example, for dwelling up to three stories multifamily, it's 1,500 square feet per unit. So we would divide 30,000 by 1,500, and we would say 20. That lot can support 20 units under density. Okay?
Okay.
So here we have a 20-unit project. 15% of 20 is three. So of the 20 units, three would need to be affordable per our ordinance. If the developer chooses to use the density bonus, he could build 23 on that same lot, even though under density requirements, he technically doesn't meet. So that dimensional control, he doesn't meet. So the whole project, the density receives the density bonus. So on a 30,000-square-foot lot, instead of building 20 units, they could actually build 23.
And the idea is that each of the 23 units will be shorted a little bit?
Right, if you actually put it down on paper, right. But they wouldn't need to go for variance. That's a key point. This is an incentive.
And I get that. I'm just trying to understand how it would actually impact a real-life example.
Yes.
Would it be that we'd have 500, you know, three 500-square-foot lots? Or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, keep in mind, this is one, one whole lot. So we basically are saying we're okay with allowing three additional units on a lot that normally wouldn't support that.
Okay.
There's not actually, the unit size wouldn't change. Open space is still required. So if they're building the 23 units, they still need to provide open space for 23 units. They still would have to meet any other individual requirements per unit.
Just parking.
It doesn't, except for parking, right? Well, parking just for the affordable unit. So it doesn't actually translate into, because that lot could never be divided. Because, at least if it's a multifamily. But keep in mind, this also applies to townhouses and anything that would have eight units or more. So that's why I wanted to maybe give a little more information to explain it.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully that helped.
Thank you. And one last question. In the feasibility, I was looking at the budget, and it looked like they were budgeting in the out-years two payments into the trust fund, and then it looked like it bumped to four after that. Or no, it went to 900, so it went from two to three. Now, that's for the payment in lieu. Is there any correlation or any rule-of thummy you used for how many other units would actually be provided other than what was being in payment in lieu?
So the, the payment in lieu was a estimate on how much, we tried to make the fee payment equal, or more or less equal to what it would cost the developer to actually build. So we wanted to make it kind of neutral. They could either build it or give the money to the trust without really much financial impact either way.
Right, and I'm okay with the 300. That's fine. But I saw that they generated ROE analysis, IRR analysis. So they must have had some idea what the projection was over the, I believe it was a five-year period, '21, and it went out, there was nothing for '21 or '22. and it went out, there was nothing for twenty-one and twenty-two, and then there was six hundred for twenty-three and twenty-four, and then I think it jumped to nine hundred in twenty-five and stepped out from there. And what my question is, is how many units do we think would be, were generated as part of those financial statements or projections that they made? Do you happen to know that?
I, I don't know that. We were going to have one of the consultants come tonight and answer some more specific questions about the study itself, but I'm not, I don't know the kind of nitty-gritty of the model.
Okay, no, fair enough. I just, it was easy to see the in-lu payments, knowing that it was three hundred thousand, and looking at that table, that budget table. And I was curious how many actual units were generated. And what my reasoning is, is I'm curious what the people who did the feasibility study projected would be actual units being produced by the developer versus people paying into a fund. That's all I was getting at, so if you, that's fine.
I think, okay, I just realized, you were asking about the budget from the Affordable Housing Trust's action plan.
Yes.
Is that, okay, now I understand. Yeah, the numbers, we kind of, those were estimates. I mean, we didn't, it wasn't based on a projection that the, our consultants for the feasibility study kind of made.
Oh, okay, it was a different group.
It was, yeah, it was, I mean, it's hard to predict, really, because it's based on construction. If we get, you know, a proposal that comes in, or if we get a bunch of proposals and they all want to go with the fee in lieu option instead of building the units, then the trust will get more money, but it was just kind of an estimate to...
Okay, yeah, and my apologies for saying it was in the feasibility study.
No worries.
Now that you mention it, I did read it in the trust information, and, you know, I was kind of interested to see how they were coming up with the pieces. But, okay, well, thank you. You did a heck of a job on the paper. I thought it was very well-written, it was comprehensive, and, you know, I enjoyed going through it, thank you. Let me see if there's anyone else would like to ask, Mr. Spattrini. Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Spattrini. As we've considered these over the years, one of the things that always comes to my attention is the numbers and how they're decided. So, I have a question as to a couple of them. The first of which is, why are we distinguishing when it comes to the income limits between rental and homeownership? I appreciated the discussion in the feasibility study, but I'm wondering if there was any discussion or consideration when coming up with this proposed ordinance. When we talk about the particular populations who historically have fallen with, in the fifty percent or under of the area median income, have historically not had the opportunity to accumulate wealth, and this way, it denies, it continues to deny them in that way in my perspective. So, can you explain whether or not that was considered and why it wasn't the same at fifty percent?
Absolutely, and it was certainly considered when we looked at, you know, the financial model, the way that we ran it. It did look to be if we required homeownership units, because it's a different, you know, beast in terms of the finances of development, they're more concerned on, you know, they're not holding the property, they're flipping it, so the return is, is a different expectation with that. When we look at the homeownership projects at fifty percent AMI, it did look to be too onerous in that it would stop a developer from building that project. However, I completely agree with you that that is an issue, and I think the thing to consider with inclusionary zoning is that it's not, it's one tool. It's one tool in the tool shed, and it's not going to be able to do, you know, all of the things that we need it to do. And I think it's important to keep what you've brought up in mind, because I think that's something we need to address, but inclusionary zoning is a very difficult mechanism to do that, because it's, it relies on the self-subsidy, essentially. There's no external kind of funding going in, which you really need for a lot of those deeper affordability projects.
I appreciate that response. And the fee in lieu, how was three hundred thousand decided? Is there a particular formula that was used, and is that formula going to be used going forward annually, just so it can be, what can be expected when the annual rate may change?
So, three hundred thousand was, came out of, you know, when they, when Colliers created their financial model, that was what they estimated to be the cost to a developer to construct those units. So, we wanted to make it kind of cost-neutral to the developer, whether they were going to build the unit or provide the cash to the trust. So, that was, a lot, some communities go lower than they think it would to incentivize the developer to just give us the money and then we can do it. Other communities go the other way and make it really high. We thought as, you know, kind of a first pass at this, that we would just kind of keep it in the middle as much as possible. It is indexed to inflation, though. So, every year, I believe we said, starting the beginning of the fiscal year, so July first, it would be, it would go up based on inflation.
Okay. And finally, why eight units for applicability as opposed to ten or fifteen that's been used in other places?
Yeah, so that, I mean, that was kind of a review of what other communities kind of around us, and there is a range. A lot of communities start at ten, and some more kind of aggressive, I think, communities start even lower than that. I think Somerville starts at six. We, we thought eight was an appropriate number. I think, you know, you can, you can see, we are trying to be a little aggressive with this. Within reason, we've done, you know, all of this work to justify why we made these decisions, but I think we want to get the most out of this, and we thought eight would be a reasonable number to start at.
Was that number floated among the developers?
I don't think so, actually, no.
So, you haven't had any feedback as to how that may impact?
No, I don't think we directly, because that came kind of at the end of the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle?
I'd just like to add something, if I could, to that number. We did look at development over the past ten years, and of the approximately twenty-one hundred units that were permitted and/or built, and most of them have been, there's probably less than a hundred on this list that I have that begins in 2010. And this is citywide, so it includes record, includes everything. Six was really a cutoff point. There were a couple six-unit projects. There was only one, so three six-unit projects, and keep in mind, anything over five units is multifamily, and one eight-unit project. After that, it went from four, excuse me, it went from twelve up. You did, there was one twelve, excuse me, I should say, it went from eleven up. So, there was an eleven, a twelve, a fourteen, a fifteen, and then it got into, you know, sixties, seventies, hundreds, and things like that. So, I think that even though it wasn't vetted with the developers, I think when we looked at historically what Malden sees in terms of growth, smaller projects, I think we, six I don't think would have been reasonable, but I think, I think eight is appropriate, given what we've seen. Thank you.
Okay. Eric McCush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Spattrini, the, in terms of the payment in lieu of the building the units, does the developer have any option for negotiation, or is that specifically prohibited? Like, using the twenty-unit example where there are three units, if they're going to pay the money, looking at nine hundred thousand dollars, but if they offered seven hundred and fifty, a lot of people would say that's a lot of money, why not just take that? Is there verbiage in there that specifically prohibits that?
I don't think there is language that explicitly prohibits that, but there is no language that allows that, and it's not our intention to allow any kind of negotiation.
Okay. And if someone was to purchase one of these affordable units, what happens when they, after a few years, go to sell it? And they've obviously put it into, money into the property as an owner, the value's risen as an owner, but they bought it at a reduced rate, does that percentage follow along? Do they have to sell it to another affordable qualified person?
Yeah, so there, and I'm not an expert in all of these different models of, you know, keeping homeownership, affordable homeownership properties affordable. However, we have put, because there's, it gets kind of complicated with how much value you can get from it when you resell, but the important thing is with this, is all of these properties will be restricted, deed-restricted, affordable in perpetuity. So, that property will never be market rate. It will always be sold to another income-eligible household.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Michelle, you wanted to elaborate?
Yes, I just also wanted to add, in terms of the negotiation question. This ordinance is written as a set of use regulations, and it expressly states, these are use regulations and there shall be no variance. So, there would be no opportunity to change that number unless the city changed the ordinance. So, everything in here, every percentage, every number, every, there's no variance of anything allowed. You couldn't seek a variance of it through Board of Appeal or anything else. You would have to try to petition to change the zoning, and it would come back before you to change it. So, I just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Spatafor or Counselor Crowe? I'm not sure which one.
Counselor Spatafor. I just wanted to add in, I think, Evan, when we would, the question with the number of units, how it was decided as a group, there was a lot, we had an outside consultant, so it wasn't just, you know, our own data, a lot of spreadsheets in terms of return and investment and making sure we get the attraction of developers. But more importantly, I think, we, you know, at least myself, we always think about new development. The eight really is trying to encourage, you know, the recycling of some of these buildings, maybe in the squares or in the neighborhoods that maybe are not big enough, but we can reconstitute affordable housing. So, the eight was not just, we always think new development, this is to entice some of the older housing stock or buildings that are throughout the city to be brought into housing units and make them affordable. So, I remember that was, the discussion was intriguing from my perspective, because I know there's some of these old manufacturing buildings, a couple Ward six, that would be ideal for that. So, that's why we, how we, I think, got to that number, and it's, to Evan's point, it's a tool, it's a moving target, and I think the good thing about ordinances, they can be changed. If eight's not enough, we go to six, we can go to six. But a little background, because I think from my perspective, like I said, we're always thinking about new development, but we really have to consider some of the old housing stock or building stock up there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Kenny Antonucci.
Yeah, Mr. Spattrini, thank you. Just to clarify, so you said that the three hundred thousand dollar in lieu of fee, it's tied to, is it tied to just the CPI, or it's tied to, but not just the base CPI, it has to be urban and include real estate as well, right? Because that's different than...
It's for this area.
It's for this area.
It's for the, I think they call it Boston, Cambridge, Quincy.
Yeah, that's, that's right. This was, it's the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, the CPIU Housing Index, which is a sub-index for the Boston-Cambridge-Newton area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Very good. Eric Henry.
Yes, sir, on slide number eight, I think a lot of my colleagues probably alluded to what was going on there. I think the question of challenge, it was the challenges to viability, and it seems that all of those numbers, especially for the rented unit condos are challenged, if you will. Is that basically because the developer is not going to reap a good return on investment there?
So, this, I mean, it is a, you know, this is a cost to the developer, their foregoing revenue, right, that they would have gotten from a market rate unit. So, all of the, we would expect all of those numbers to be negative. What our consultant was trying to highlight here is the orange text is really what they thought would be too much and would just stop. Would, the developer would not be interested in pursuing that development if the return on investment or the IRR were to go that much lower.
Also, with regards to the payment in lieu, if a developer chooses to go the route of making that payment, those funds were allocated for the use of a certain ask or a certain use. Does the city now become a developer in this, with this regard? Do they, it's tasked to make that, you know, affordable units?
Yes, so, so those, the fees in lieu would go to the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Affordable Housing Trust is, you know, a pretty new body. We just, or we just adopted our action plan, and we're still trying to kind of figure out all the mechanisms by which we will fund projects, but the trust's activities are investing in affordable housing projects. So, we already, I believe there is nine hundred thousand dollars in that trust right now. So, we haven't invested in any projects yet, but those funds that come to the trust from any fee in lieu payments would still go to affordable housing, building affordable housing.
Okay. Eric, are you off that?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Yep. To elaborate on that, Counselor, or do you have a different point?
Yeah, no, I want to elaborate on the responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I sit on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we've had that discussion. There are some housing trusts that actually build the buildings and are developers and hold it. Right now, the trust sense is that we would fund projects done by community development corporations or nonprofits that focus on affordable housing. So, the city would not hold that, and that's the sense of, for the Housing Trust right now. So, we would be, like I say, investing, but we wouldn't be holding or being the construction manager, that type of thing.
Thank you, Counselor. Tawadij Ghaberslas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the compliance. The seller or ownership, it says it should notify like the city before listing the property for sale, but seller are not like obligated to list the unit in mass-access housing website, or they are not obligated to advertise a unit, but they have the right to accept any offer, because I personally, I got one of, like, I believe it's in Franklin Street, it's an affordable housing. The seller notifies the city of Malden by Friday. I got an notification Monday morning around nine o'clock. I called to the seller around nine fifteen, he said that the unit is gone. So, I was wondering how residents like me, how we could benefit when the ownership or the affordable unit is trying to sell. I'm not sure. I just need clarification.
Sure. So, there are two opportunities. You know, when the, when the building is initially constructed, that would be done through a lottery, and it would be on the developer to put together that, to conduct that lottery and put together a marketing plan. We have not, so, we will develop kind of standards and procedures around what those things look like. I believe it is written in the ordinance that, you know, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state, they have standards for what those marketing and lottery plans look like. So, that's one piece. The resale is a little bit different.
Yep.
And quite frankly, we don't know what that exactly will look yet, like yet. That, the monitoring and compliance, the line that we put in there was, you know, the city of Malden shall have the authority to develop standards and procedures appropriate, and we did that for a couple of reasons. The... The main reason being, if you codify it in the ordinance, it makes it a lot more difficult to change later. You know, these are, these would be our practices for making sure, you know, that when an affordable unit, homeownership unit is sold again, that it is sold at an affordable rate to an eligible household. So it is our responsibility to make sure that happens, but how that happens, we have not set that yet. But that is kind of our next task, to figure all of those, those background things out. And I will say, you know, our office, we have experience with affordable resales and, you know, that is another kind of arm of what formerly the MRA does is the, manage the federal home program, which does, you know, invest in affordable housing development. And we, we do that kind of activity, monitoring and compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
No set to outage?
Yes.
Eric Henry.
Sir, with regards to, I think it was probably slide 23, it was kind of alluded to earlier, you probably have the answer, but it was someone, I think the city was being tasked to develop something? Could you?
That's right.
Could you, and do we have a who? Or is that on the development?
Yeah, so that, that is the, the compliance and monitoring. So we, we, as, as a city, will need to make sure that all of these units remain affordable as they are intended through this ordinance. So for rental units, we are requiring owners of those units to submit annual statements of income, rent level, house, you know, household income, to verify that they are in compliance. And for homeownership, we are requiring an owner of an affordable unit to notify the city upon resale to make sure that they are doing that. We have not figured out all of the kind of ins and outs of, you know, what is, what is, what does this annual statement look like? What, is it a form that we send them that they fill out? Is it, you know, those kinds of things are an administrative task on our side that we do have experience doing with other kind of federal affordable housing programs.
Would be undertaken by your office?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead. Pardon interruption, I guess if, as Counselor Spatafor said, I think this is kind of focused on new development, but this is an old problem in Malden, if we're being realistic. And maybe you can help me out with something. Can you, can you, I know we're talking about inclusionary zoning, but in your opinion, what is exclusionary zoning?
In my opinion, what is exclusionary zoning? I, I mean typically, you know, what we think of as exclusionary zoning, and I think what is, and I'm not, I'm not a land use law expert, but I think what would be considered exclusionary zoning, to the point where it would be determined unconstitutional, would be something like, you know, requiring a very, you know, large lot size. Basically, anything that kind of prohibits, I want to be careful about how I word this because I'm not an expert in this, but typically you would look at, you know, large lot sizes that would really restrict how much housing you could build. I feel like that's as specific as I could get.
I can give you a pretty specific example. We went from lotside 6,000 square feet to 7,500 square feet in Malden. Is that big enough? Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Patrick Hayes.
Thank you. The ordinance addresses specifically new, new developments, new housing. During the course of the process, was there any discussion about or study as to what it would take to bring existing units into the fold as affordable? And perhaps maybe some type of incentive for those landowners to do so?
I think that's, it's not something we really considered within the confines of inclusionary zoning. Typically, I don't, I haven't heard of any examples where inclusionary zoning would apply to a, you know, if you were doing a rehab of an existing residential building, if you could then kind of get affordable units. And that, there is, you know, I think Counselor Spatafor was referring to, if there's a change of use, if it went from industrial to housing, that, that we can, you know, it's new housing units. I don't know if there's any example of anyone kind of doing that on an existing, you know, rehab of existing housing. I think there are other, so again, you know, inclusionary zoning is one tool. And I think it is, you know, it's focused on new construction or just broadly, you know, new housing units. But there are other tools. I think that's something that certainly the Affordable Housing Trust could invest their money in purchasing existing properties and converting them to affordable housing. I think that would be a more appropriate strategy for, for that, that mechanism. Thank you.
Okay, Pat. Ken Intenucci.
So just go a little further than what, you know, same vein as what Patrick was just asking. In the applicability section under the zoning, under this proposal, it does say that, you know, it states a net increase of eight or more dwelling units, whether created in whole or in part through new construction in one or more buildings and/or by alteration, extension, reconstruction, structural change. So, I mean, you could have an example where that would be applicable, where say someone has a building that already has 10 units and they're large multi, you know, bedroom units and they cut them down into a bunch of, you know, call it one bedrooms or change the floor plans or whatever. So in that case, would the inclusionary zoning be able to be applied there?
If it's a, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a net increase of eight units, then yes. And I, I believe it would, the requirement would just be on the eight. So it would be 15% of eight, not the whole.
Right, okay. So that's where I was going with it. So it would be the 15% on the net increase of eight. So they could get the one unit and then hopefully, possibly apply for the, you know, all the other incentives.
Right.
Based on that, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes, I would agree. It definitely would apply and I think we did contemplate that. This language started off a little simpler when it just said that increase of eight and we added a lot of this language. So whether the units, the eight are created in whole or in part through new construction in one or more buildings and/or by alteration, extension, reconstruction, structural change or change of use of an existing building or buildings. We were trying to capture every possible scenario. It could be a conversion of a factory to residential or it could be, as you said, a large, larger units that get split up and we didn't want to lose any opportunity because only half of the units were actually technically new and the others were conversions of existing space. So that's why it was written so broadly, to try to capture every possible scenario because we do see a lot of new construction in Malden, but we also see a lot of redevelopment in Malden. So I wanted to add that, thank you.
Ken, did you have something else?
Yeah, no, just, you know, that's where I was going with that as well, because you could have, you know, we have developments that are multi-b buildings that even if there was just an additional unit or two and you had four buildings, you could trigger this as well. Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Spatrin? Do any of the counselors have any questions for Mr. Spatrin? Would you like to add anything else?
I, I think I would just, you know, like to reiterate that inclusionary zoning is, you know, it's, it's one tool in the tool shed. And I think this, we are, we're being, you know, we're trying to be pretty aggressive with, with the ordinance that, that we designed. I don't, I don't think there are a lot of other communities that start at 50% AMI. I think it's incredibly appropriate for our community. And I'm, I'm proud that we kind of pushed for that. But, you know, it does, it does not cover everything and there's still a lot that we have to think about using some other tools, including the Affordable Housing Trust and some other, you know, programs that would develop new affordable housing. But I think this is a great, you know, step in, forward for, for Malden and really investing in long-term affordability. So appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
Thank you for joining us and for answering our questions. Appreciate it. At this point, would like to entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor of this council paper. Anyone to speak in favor? When you come up, if I could ask you to come up, state your name and address for the record, speak into the microphone and, and there should be a pad of paper and a pen there if you could sign your name or fill out your name and address for the record. We'd appreciate that, thank you.
See, thank you, to accommodate my height. Okay. Well, we'll deal with this as best we can. My name is Angie Liu and my residential address is 35 Mount Vernon Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Thank you to members of the Planning Board and the City Council Ordinance Committee. I am the Executive Director of the Asian Community Development Corporation. We have an office currently at 11th and Dartmouth Street, but we'll be moving at the end of the year. So in case you don't know, Asian CDC is a nonprofit with three decades of track record in affordable housing. We have developed over several hundred units of affordable housing in the greater Boston over the years. At our Malden office for the last several years, we provide high school youth programming as well as first time home buyer education and one-on-one housing counseling and financial literacy. Last year, we also launched a match savings program just for Malden residents, actually thanks to the city's CDBG funding support. I also currently serve on Malden's newly created Affordable Housing Trust and really excited that we just completed our first action plan. So as Evan said before, when the trust was putting together the action plan, we relied partly on the 2019 Housing Needs Assessment that showed not only the majority of Malden households are renters, but that these renters were more likely to be cost burdened. Since the COVID pandemic, we have seen many more Malden residents struggle just to meet their housing expenses. We know that the city's own emergency rental assistance program saw great demand from Malden residents. ACDC's own Chinese language hotlines for rental and mortgage assistance also received many calls from Malden residents. So we know that COVID has only exacerbated the need for affordable housing. Even though we are seeing the regional economy slowly coming back, the need for affordable housing for our workers and our families in Malden is more structural and long-term. Inclusionary zoning is a way to leverage market rate developments to create affordable housing. It will also create potential new funding sources for adding affordable housing. Although now we have an Affordable Housing Trust in the city, it has less than a million dollars and there's no clear funding source for replenishing that. I fully support creating an inclusionary zoning in the city so that we have a more equitable city where households of different means and from all walks of life can still live here. I urge you to vote in favor of this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Roxanne Reddington-Wild. I lived at 35 Bancroft Road in Malden for about 23 years and one month probably at this point in time. My spouse grew up here in Malden and actually my in-laws were Malden and Everett for, since the 30s. I am here also as a member of the Malden Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Board and I speak very strongly in favor of adopting the inclusionary zoning ordinance, both as a Malden resident and actually as a person who's done a great deal of anti-poverty work. I work at ABCD, which you know is Malden and Boston's Anti-Poverty Community Action Agency. I've done, run housing conferences. Do, I specialize in public benefits and outreach with that. But really more to the point is that it's not just me as a single Malden resident who is supporting this. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in our action plan, to develop our action plan, we ran six focus groups with developers in many, many different, you know, different sort of professional areas of interest. We also ran a large community meeting and every group and the community meeting all brought up the issue of inclusionary zoning. Everybody was, all the groups were in favor of this. It is something that Malden needs, something that Malden has needed. It's frankly actually past time that we adopt this so that we can build housing for Malden's residents of all incomes. The only reason why my spouse and I were able to buy in Malden was that unfortunately my father died when I was 35 years old. And I had an inheritance from him that allowed me to buy. And that was when, that was what, 97, I guess it was, I have to do my math with that. But prices were already skyrocketing, but we knew that with that 30,000 I got from my dad, we could do it. And the first time I, the first time I drove a nail into the wall at my new home in Bancroft Road and I realized it wasn't a renter anymore, I just wished my dad was there. It shouldn't take an inheritance to be able to buy a home or to afford a home in Malden. It just shouldn't. And at this point, when I talk to people, they say, oh my gosh, even that inheritance, it wouldn't allow me to buy a home in Malden. We need to have Malden homes available for everyone and the inclusionary zoning ordinance does that. The payment in lieu allows us extra flexibility. The details in the ordinance allow us to really keep the housing and the costs associated with housing affordable at that 30% of income. My current area specialty is actually fuel assistance and utility bills. I've been actually spending the past weeks calling people who unfortunately, this was actually in Boston, weren't able to get all their paperwork in for fuel assistance. And I've been spending most of my time saying, here's perhaps how you can afford, you can manage not to get your electricity shut off, get your gas shut off. I don't want that to happen to people. There's some people that I've locked out and I've called them literally the day that they were supposed to get their electricity shut off as their child turned one. We are better than that in Malden. We will continue to be. We will continue to be better than that in Malden. And the inclusionary zoning is a way that we can be better for everyone here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Amy Friedman. I live at 8 Marvin Street. I've been a renter and a homeowner in Malden and I support passage of the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. I particularly think that one of the things that might be a great impact from this is keeping young people in Malden, making sure that they can afford a place to live here in Malden and hopefully purchase a home and become longtime residents here. I had some concerns over some of the alternative methods of compliance and still maybe have some concerns, but I think that this is important to pass this ordinance and see how those alternative methods of compliance play out when it's in practice. So the review that we're going to do every five years, I think is important that we look at that with the, the hope that the intent of the ordinance comes through. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Marsha Manong. I live at 296 Bryan Street, Malden. I'm a renter. I'm a member of Mass Senior Action Council and we are definitely in support of Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. We have been working or promoting inclusionary zoning for many years. I just wanted to take this opportunity, one, to ask you to, to approve this ordinance, but I also wanted to say thank you to Evan and his team. Thank you to the mayor. This has been long overdue. We all know that it is needed. So there's no need to reiterate the same thing that's been said. It's just up to you to get it passed and let us get to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Catherine Price. I currently rent at 32th Street, Malden for the last six years I've been there. I was born and raised in Malden and I'm part of the Malden Redevelopment Trust Fund. I think that it is important for you to consider the inclusionary zoning because it has come up in a lot of our meetings that we've had for... And it would be helpful to our city to have this included. And I want to thank the Malden Redevelopment because they've been helping with people who have been having a hard time pay their rent and stuff. So they've been, a lot of people have actually gotten help from the Malden Redevelopment Trust Fund. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. And could you please sign in, please? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this petition?
Hello, my name is Ryan O'Malley. I'm the Ward for City Councilor. I'd also like to thank Evan Spattrini and the advisory group. It's great that we are finally getting this done and it would not have been possible without Evan's work. I'd also like to thank Mass Senior Action Council for leading the charge for this for close to a decade. As you just heard from Marsha Manong, we are also joined by Karen Lynch, who were leading the charge very many years ago and I do really appreciate it and I think you deserve a round of applause. So in the last six to 10 years, we have seen hundreds of market rate units built. All you have to do is look around. Many of them have been luxury and I can only imagine how many Malden seniors and residents we would have been able to keep in our community had we taken action sooner, when this wasn't politically expedient and it was no longer an easy thing to pass like it is today. As Member Henry said, this is an old problem. And I say this because writing zoning ordinances are not just the responsibility of the City Council, it's the responsibility of the entire community. It's also the responsibility of a number of boards and commissions. According to Section 12.32.050, you have that in front of you, that's 12.32.050, section called amendments, in addition to the City Council, the following people and groups may petition the city to amend our zoning ordinances. The Planning Board, the Board of Appeal, any individual owning land affected by the amendment, 10 registered voters, and the Regional Planning Agency, which is MAPC. I say this because I hope that we no longer have to wait a decade to make needed changes to our zoning, needed changes that will keep Malden residents in our community. If any one of you or a few of you have ideas of how we can change our zoning to make it better, I highly suggest that you work together, not a quorum unless it's in a public body or in a publicly posted meeting, present your proposal to the chair of your committee. It will be presented, you all can vote on it and submit it to the City Council. If you need any help with that, I'm here as a resource. I would love to work with you all individually or collectively. I do appreciate your support on this and passing this tonight. Thank you very much, Ryan O'Malley, Ward for City Council.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
I received from Diana Jong of 12 West Street, Malden, Mass, who is also, she identified herself as the Vice President of the Greater Malden Asian Community, Asian American Community Coalition. I received a package of letters on August 9, 2021. There are 209 letters. I'm not going to read all 209. It's a form letter, so I was thinking I could read the letter once. If I can certainly, you know, identify, there are 209 different names and addresses that are on here. It's, we'll leave it up to the chair.
Yes, no, that's fine. Please read the full letter once.
Yes.
And let the records reflect that there were 209 copies that were submitted by various people. And if anyone wants a list of the names, they are welcome to contact Michelle Romero at the inspection.
Yes, this will be all incorporated into the record. I can give you, you know, a small breakdown. There were certain properties, you know, the multiple, multiple residents of, for example, the same address. So there were groups, I don't want to identify any particular property or group, but there were several larger groups based on address. Then there were a lot of miscellaneous addresses, you know, a variety of addresses. I can tell you that they're citywide. It wasn't limited to one ward or one street or one area of the city. So I will read the letter. It stated August 6, 2021. It reads regarding inclusionary zoning policy in Malden. I am writing to express my strong support for the enactment of the inclusionary zoning policy in Malden. If passed, this policy would benefit Malden residents' needs for affordable housing. With increasing diversity in Malden, it is significant to provide housing at various prices to tailor to the needs of residents. The development of affordable housing addresses social, economic, and educational inequalities that persist but may be invisible. Affordable housing is the key to serve the needs of critically underrepresented and underserved communities. Additionally, Malden is a vibrant and fast-growing city. With such rapid development, the cost of living, especially housing, is significantly increasing. More and more people are facing economic stress as housing costs become less affordable. The city cannot attract more residents to live and work in the city without reasonable housing affordability. I strongly feel that the enactment of the Malden Inclusionary Zoning Policy will contribute to improved housing affordability and a better community image in the long term. As a long-term resident of Malden, I have sensed the need for the increasing demands for more affordable housing. I believe that the Malden Inclusionary Zoning Policy will transform Malden into a more vibrant and diverse community that allows prosperity to thrive in many families. I look forward to seeing the progress of the enactment to make Malden a better place for its many residents to live, work, and play. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Sincerely. And then the individual names are typed with an address. They're all Malden addresses and there's also a phone number for each that's provided. And so there are 209 of them.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have anything else to read?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing in here none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No.
Seeing no one in opposition and nothing to read in opposition, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Do you have anything to read in general, Michelle?
No. I was going to read the mayor's introductory letter proposal of this proposal, but I believe he's covered everything, so I won't read that.
Okay, very good. So we, we closed in favor and opposed. Counselors, better for, what would you care to share?
Did you, did you close the portion, Rick? Did you close?
I did.
Okay. Michelle, I just have a procedural question, just so everybody knows, and I know this paper's been started before the summer break. Can you just walk through for the benefit of the public and probably the ordinance committee too, when this paper would expire, given this is the first step on the process, meaning the public hearing goes back to the ordinance committee once we get the opinion of this board committee? And then we would have to vote it up by when, just, just so I think everybody hears the timeline, both in terms of the ordinance committee, the public, as well as the planning board. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, just give me one minute. You have 90 days, this is you, meaning the City Council has 90 days from the date the public hearing closes to take final action on the paper. So presuming the hearing closes tonight, it just closed, I don't believe there'll be any interest in tabling it or, it's closed at least at this point. If it closes tonight, August 11th, November 9th would be the date for final action. So what will happen, if the hearing closes tonight and the planning board makes its recommendation, the board does have 21 days after the hearing closes to make a recommendation. Typically, they make it the same night as the hearing close. I presume you'll do that tonight. You'll make your recommendation. I will send it to the City Council in writing. The City Council will receive it, so that will have to be docketed. I would, I'm not sure when the next available time to do that. They'll receive the communication and typically the council sends the planning board recommendation to the ordinance committee for discussion. Ordinance committee can discuss it as many times as it wants. Then tip within the timeframe typically makes a recommendation out to the full council. The full council receives that recommendation and then it's typically when the council will make a final decision, what they call take final action. It is possible, it's not usual, but it is possible on the night that the council receives the planning board recommendation, if that is not referred to ordinance committee, it goes right out to the full council. The full council could vote on it that night. That is a possibility. That has happened, maybe I can think of, once in, in the years I've been here. So it's not typical, but it can happen. Then it would be going forward without a recommendation of the ordinance committee. It would just be discussed out on the floor at the council and, you know, could potentially be put right that same night for action, not final action, because of course they have to enroll and ordain. Ordaining is the final action. So, thank you.
You all set, Councilor? Anyone else have any other questions for Michelle? If not, Michelle, can you read the staff report, please?
Yes, as we heard, the petition was made by the City Council. It was filed by several councils at large and ward counselors. You do have a copy of the full text of the amendment. That is City Council Paper 232 of 2021. That was with the accompanying correspondence from Mayor Christensen to the City Council dated May 11, 2021. You have a copy of that as well. Noting here, we did hear from Councilor O'Malley, who can petition to amend the zoning. The mayor actually cannot petition to amend the zoning, which is why he submitted the proposal to the City Council. He himself didn't petition, but he presented the whole proposal to the council with the recommendations to move it forward. That's in the letter dated May 11, 2021. He presented it for review and discussion purposes. The council discussed it at ordinance committee level, made a recommendation, and then the paper was formally filed and referred for public hearing, which is the, it's actually the same paper. No changes were made between the time of the original filing and then the new filing. So this is the original paper that was presented and proposed by the mayor. It was filed, there was a committee report. I have copies of it if anybody is interested in it. I've given you all the dates here, when it was presented to the council, when it was discussed by the council. And then the petition was filed on June 29th. At that time, it was referred for joint public hearing. We do have to have the hearing within 65 days, so that is why we are doing it over the course of the summer, even though the council is, is on break. And this is, again, I'm talking about the joint public hearing that's required by state law and our own local statute, a joint public hearing of the Planning Board and City Council Ordinance Committee. So the proposed amendments, I've given you some highlights. This is a summary of the provisions. I'm probably, I won't try not to repeat anything that Evan Spattrini already did, but I do want to call out a couple other things, call out a couple other provisions to your attention. So applicability, this ordinance would apply to property in all zoning districts. So regardless of where the development is, if it triggers this ordinance and it's considered an inclusionary development, which we heard is a net increase of eight or more units, it will be, regardless of the property, it will trigger this ordinance. I do want to also note, in terms of applicability, we talked a little bit about how these units can be created. They can be new construction, meaning a new building, or it can be a redevelopment of an existing building. But I also want to call your attention to two other ways that we can create these, excuse me, that these units can be created and this ordinance would be triggered. If there is a subdivision and there is a net increase of eight or more dwelling lots, this will also be triggered. So the house doesn't actually have to be built, the unit doesn't have to be built. So if you're looking at a large lot of land and they're proposing a subdivision of eight or more, this is going to be triggered. Also, net increase of eight or more assisted living units. Now, we've seen a couple projects, this board has seen assisted living. They come in one of two ways, either as a multifamily dwelling that has restrictions on it and it's assisted living, so it's age restricted, or they come in as a nursing convalescent home use in their assisted living units. That was the example of the McFadden redevelopment. So as I said briefly before, when we drafted this ordinance, we were trying to make sure we captured all possible scenarios. Anytime we were going to potentially get these eight new Special permit granting authority is the planning board. So it will be you unless the ordinance requires a special permit for some other reason. For example, it's a structure more than six stories and it requires a special permit from the city council, then the city council would be the special permit granting authority under that ordinance and under this inclusionary zoning ordinance. So it will be one board or the council that decides the matter. They would not have to go to the council and then come back to the planning board. But where, there is no other special permit required, it will come to the planning board. I want to note that almost all the multi, well, all multifamily dwellings in the city would require a special permit already, unless they're in one of two districts. Either of the residential incentive overlay zoning districts, so that's A residential incentive overlay and residential incentive overlay B, those are two downtown districts, or the Roquory Reclamation Redevelopment District. Both of those two districts, the RIO districts and then the Roquory districts, don't require a special permit for multifamily, or at least not all multifamily. Roquory does require it if you're going over eight stories. RIO doesn't require it. It's only site plan review. Those would trigger a special permit under this ordinance, so anytime there's a creation of the eight units, any district, any property. And I also want to mention, we're also, I mentioned it briefly, we're talking about townhouses as well. We're not just talking about multifamily high rises or apartment buildings. It could be, you know, a group of townhouses. There was a development a few years back, one of the schools over on Charles Street, and that's a whole townhouse development. So it could be triggered there as well, in a townhouse scenario. The key number that we've been talking about, or the two key numbers of the eight dwelling, the eight, the number of eight, how many units trigger this, and then the percentage of affordable housing that would be required, 15%. We talked about, already we heard about how the affordable housing units are restricted. I've given you a breakdown here, chart, taken some of the language out of the ordinance to make it a little bit easier to see. In terms of household eligibility, so you have the 15% required, those, the income level, are less, 50% or less of the area median income. But for any of the additional units, affordable units that are created, because keep in mind that could happen, a developer could want to create more than 15%. Those have a little bit different area median income. It's a little greater, so it's less than or equal to 80%. And the homeownership, again, there are also two different criteria standards for those. For the required 15%, it's 51 to 80% of the area median income, and for anything beyond that, any affordable units beyond that, the income level could actually go up to 100% of the area median income level. We heard about the local preference. There'll be a lottery and marketing plan that must include a preference for Malden residents. We've already talked at length about the incentives. I won't go into that, but I do want to note one particular thing. The density bonus is, actually, both of these bonuses, they're applicable at the applicant's choice or request, so they're not required to do that. You might think, well, why wouldn't they? But they might not. They might not want to build the additional units. And in terms of the parking, depending on the location in the city, they may not, they may want to provide the additional parking if it's not, you know, close to transit. So those are optional. We heard already about the development standards, alternative methods of compliance. I won't get into those. Administration. I will just note two things, and I think Evan mentioned a couple of them. In terms of all this documentation, the lottery, the affordability, the mix of units, the location of the units, everything, all that has to be documented and provided to the city at the time of application. So when an application comes to you, if it comes to you, it will be a large application with all types of information, narratives, et cetera. Everything is supposed to be laid out in detail by the petitioner. If for some reason, you know, we do need assistance in reviewing the application, there is a provision in here that says you can hire an outside consultant to assist you with that, to do peer reviews or to just assist in the review process in general, and those fees would be paid by the applicant. We heard about compliance and monitoring. Again, the city will be doing, developing standards and procedures to do that. The needs assessment review as well is going to be done by the city in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that group will have the opportunity to make, recommend amendments to the council. So if something isn't working in the ordinance or is not phrased correctly, or we're not getting the correct results, or any number of reasons, they would have the chance to make recommendations to this ordinance. Any changes to the ordinance, as I mentioned before, we need to come back through the whole process, the zoning amendment process, same thing that you're hearing now, the same process we're going through now. So I'll stop there. If nobody has any questions, I'll continue. Okay.
Let's see anyone.
Okay. So current zoning does not require the provision of affordable housing units. Affordable housing and inclusionary zoning ordinances were previously proposed and considered in 2002 and 2016. Neither of those was ordained. I've given you the info, a little snapshot of each of those papers, what had been proposed. I've listed some background information. I won't get into too many of the details. This whole report is incorporated by reference into the record of this hearing. I've given you information about the affordable housing stock. We hear a lot about the number, the subsidized housing inventory record number. Malden currently is at 10.2%, and that is based on the 2010 U.S. Census data. So that is determinative at this time. I did do a little research and found that May 2022 is when we're expected to receive the 2020 numbers. So we do expect that 10.2% number will change. And the 10.2 is the number, percentage of housing units in Malden that are considered affordable, in accordance with the state definition of affordability. This board will recall the general land area minimum calculation that was done back in 2019. That's also talking, referencing a statutory threshold. And this is, I'm talking about Mass General Law's Chapter 40B. The board will recall the housing needs assessment was done in 2019. You all have a copy of that. You'd been given a copy before. I do have a couple extras if anybody needs them. You also received a copy of the Inclusionary Zoning Feasibility Study, which we heard about at length. I won't get into the details of those. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we heard about the establishment of that, also the Board of Trustees, and then finally the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Action Plan of 2021. You all received a copy of that tonight. That has in it, for your reference, the ordinance regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Board of Trustees. So that's a document that has more than just their action plan in it. I wanted to point that out to you. In terms of application and exemptions, the amendments would apply to new construction and new use and occupancy of existing buildings unless exempt by state law, our local ordinance, the express language of the amendment, or if the property is a subject of a building permit or special permit issued before the first date of publication of the notice of public hearing for this hearing, which was July 23, 2021, or is land part of an approved or endorsed approval not required or definitive subdivision plan. There are two projects that are exempt from the proposed amendments because there were special permits issued before the first publication of hearing notice. So these special permits were issued before July 23, 2021. One is for 54 Eastern Avenue, that's 14 units, and two is for 368 Pleasant Street, 30 units. Per state statute, applications for permits that are in the processing stage when publication occurs are not protected. Historically, though, the city interprets and extends the protection because petitioner in good faith relied on the ordinance that was on the books when he or she applied. So those typically, we would say, the amendments wouldn't apply to applications filed prior to the first date of publication. There are no applications in that processing stage. And then finally, the effective date is the date of the city council's vote to ordain the amendment. Your standard of review, so when you review and make recommendations for proposed zoning amendments, they should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. I will note, and I didn't say that at the beginning, you will be making an advisory recommendation to the city council. A majority of the board needs to vote in the affirmative to make that recommendation. It's the city council that decides whether or not to ordain it, but this will be your opportunity to make the advisory recommendation. The proposed amendments are consistent with findings, goals, and recommendations identified in the following plans: the Malden Vision of 2008, the Malden Master Plan of 2010, the Malden Housing Needs Assessment of 2019, the Inclusionary Zoning Feasibility Study of 2021, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Action Plan of 2021. So the recommendation which was made prior to the public hearing would be that the planning board recommended the city council approval of the amendments in city council paper 232 of 2021 as submitted. I don't have any additional language to recommend. I was involved with the drafting of it. I think everything, we tried to include and fine-tune everything we possibly could before it was presented, even to the mayor, and then was reviewed multiple times after that as well. So it's been fully reviewed. I can't recommend anything else at this time. I will attend the ordinance committee meetings and/or city council meetings in case there is questions about any recommendation you make, or there's any need for my assistance to help with drafting any revisions or anything like that.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Ken Antinucci.
Yeah, Michelle, just going back to the in-loop payment, the $300,000, you know, we've talked a lot about that. And it looks like it specifically would be tied to the CPIU. Is there any other mechanism that the council could adjust that number? I guess my concern is that the housing price index could, you know, I believe is outpaced CPI. So could there be, is there another way to say that, you know, if housing prices keep going up and up and up, and it doesn't, you know, way more than inflation does, is there a way to, that the city council can increase that 300,000, you know, as the housing prices increase?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I know we relied on our consultant being planning strategies. He suggested that be the criteria, because we wanted to put a criteria in there. I think we can talk to him again and see if, express these concerns and see if there's any other number that he would recommend, but I do believe he recommended this was the standard that we use.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, I personally don't know of any others, and I didn't even know of this one, honestly. We relied on his expertise.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious, the way it's written, it sounds like it's tied absolutely to the CPIU, and it doesn't seem like the council would have any other ability to change that amount, although you did say that they could always try to adjust the ordinance.
If the 300,000 isn't the correct number, it's too high or too low, we could, there could be a petition to amend that number. But there's still time, when it gets back to the council level, to change the adjustment criteria. If they don't want to use the urban, the CPI housing, CPIU housing index, they want to use something else, they would have the opportunity to do that at their level before they enroll and ordain.
And that would not have to come back to us at all.
That would not have to come back to us. This is in here, this is considered to be, it's contemplated that an adjustment criteria is going to be used, whether it's this one or another one. I would not, in my opinion at least, trigger another public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Michelle? If there are no questions, is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to adopt planning recommendations to recommend to the city council the approval of the amendments to the city council paper.
Ken's made a motion for the recommendation of staff to adopt the council paper as submitted. Eric McCush.
I'll second that motion.
Eric McCush has seconded the motion. Okay, let me queue up here, so you want to start with Ken?
Ken Antinucci?
Hold on a second. Patrick's done something with his. Can you click your button, Pat, please? Thank you. Okay. Very good.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawada Ghebersalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Ayoven?
Yes.
The recommendation from the planning board to the city council ordinance committee will be in favor of this council paper.
Yes, I will make that recommendation in writing and send it to the city council.
Next item on the agenda is another council paper. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Evan, great job presenting it and answering the questions. Thank you. And so, Ken, if you could read the, what's that? Yeah. You read this, did you read this, include this in your initial reading? The second, okay, can you read the second notice, please? No, no, the blurb you read that announces what it is.
We didn't read.
Okay, can you?
hold a public hearing at the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, August 11, 2021, in accordance with Section 12.32.050 of Chapter 12 of the Revised Ordinances of 2020, as amended of the City of Malden on a petitions for zoning amendments made in city council papers, number 232 of 2021 and 339 of 2021, to further amend the following sections of Chapter 12 of the Revised Ordinances of 2020 as amended of the City of Malden as follows. Two, Use Regulations, Sections 12.12.030 and 12.12.090, to amend existing use regulations to prohibit off-site parking facilities in the Residence A zoning district, City Council Paper 339, 2021.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you very much, Honorable Planning Board. My name is Ryan O'Malley. I'm a ward for City Councilor. Before you today is a proposal to eliminate or prohibit off-site parking facilities in Residence A or Residential A zoning districts. It pretty much will just take the use, the table of use regulations and switch it from SP to no. And I start with the premise that when a development is built in our community, parking should be provided on-site. In my opinion, and when speaking with my residents, we do not think, and I do not believe, that development in a single-family neighborhood should be buying up surrounding single-family homes or open space, knocking that down, and then creating a paved off-site parking facility. I do not believe it's the highest and best use of our land, and I do not think it makes our community more livable. So I would ask each of you, would you like to live next to a parking lot? I know that I wouldn't, and most of the residents, I've I know that I wouldn't, and most of the residents that I've spoken with would also not like to live next to a parking lot either. I did review the staff report, which is provided to you prior to the meeting, and it does encourage you to disapprove of this amendment. If you have any questions, I'm here for that, but I would respectfully ask that you vote favorably for, to keep unnecessary parking lots out of our neighborhoods, specifically Residence A, which currently under our zoning is specific for single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a specific location that you're concerned about, or is this just in general? You're looking forward to just abandoning this type of special permit? I guess what's driving it?
If there is a, if we have a class called Residence A, and the point of that area is for a single-family home, I don't see why we would ever need to have an off-site parking facility. There are some examples where it could be a pre-existing non-conforming use that is going from, say, an old factory or office building and converting into residential. My premise is that the parking should be provided on-site in that type of circumstance, and shouldn't be provided, you know, potentially 300 feet away. Knowing what our community is like, what is going to happen in that case is you're going to be having a developer buying up single-family homes or open space or some other higher and better use, knocking that down and putting in a parking facility. I think that we are at the point now where our property is so valuable that if you need the parking in that location, there should be a way that they can provide it on-site, whether that's underground or a parking facility on their own property, not necessarily, you know, an agreement 300 feet down the road.
Okay, thank you. Patrick Fitzgerald?
Why do you believe that the existing ordinance, which does require a special permit, doesn't already cover and protect what you are arguing? There's a standard review that we have to make to approve that. There's an opportunity for the public and the residents to comment, and that would be taken into consideration. Why does the zone ordinance have to change?
That is true. I mean, there is the opportunity for that. It doesn't have to change. It can stay the way it is, but the Planning Board, you know, does change, and it really depends on the decision of the Planning Board whether or not to allow something.
Are you aware of circumstances where the Planning Board has approved an off-site parking facility in a Residence A neighborhood that you disagree with?
I can only refer to the staff report. I believe, if I read it correctly, there was only four. Is that correct?
There are only four in Residence A.
Understood.
And they may, I'll just add, I don't have the records. They certainly, in the last 20 years, didn't come in for a special permit. I don't know if they were ever subject to a special permit, or they predate the special permit requirements.
I'll just give an example. On Pleasant Street, I believe it's in Ward Three, there was a brick building on the north side of Pleasant Street where half of it burnt down, and they had to reconstruct that building. If I remember correctly, they bought up houses across the street, knocked them down, and put in a parking lot. That's kind of what really inspired this. I just don't think that the highest and best use of our land is an asphalt parking lot. I think that the value of our property is much higher than that. It does also exacerbate the heat island effect, which Malden is part of and does suffer from. It's just, that's just my perspective. I don't think it's something that is in the best interests of our community.
Thank you. Michelle, in that circumstance, if someone did that in a Residence A zone without a special permit, there would be recourse for that, correct?
Yes, in that particular... Yes, yes, that particular property, I'm just going to quickly look it up, that was, that did come in for a special permit. That was tied to the apartment building across the street that was a subject of a fire, so the whole apartment building got burnt, and they were upgrading and renovating that apartment building. It was the developer that, there was no parking on the site to start with. So it was an apartment building that predated all the requirements. The developer proposed offering off-site parking, and then that went through the special permit process for that. But I will say, and, you know, I will bet that is not actually on the list that I have, so I'm going to look that up right now.
I mean, would that be considered an off-site parking facility, or would that be considered...
That was an off-site parking facility. An off-site parking facility is a standalone parking lot or a parking garage. So like the one the board looked at most recently on Cross Street, and that's not in Residence A. That is a standalone parking facility. No, that was neighborhood business.
So that was allowed by special permit?
That was allowed by special permit, but it wasn't in a, it wasn't in Residence A, to my knowledge.
No, I'm talking about Pleasant Street.
Oh, the Pleasant Street one?
Yes.
Yeah, let me just look that up quickly. Because I'm not sure why that didn't come up on this list. This list that I ran was based on the assessors only, but... I'm pretty sure that one is, yeah. So that's connected with 505 Pleasant Street and 516 Pleasant Street, which, the reason it didn't come up on my list is because previously there was a garage on that property. No, they did knock down a house. There was a row, I believe, of garages, so it's coming up as outbuilding. But that did go for a permit for, that did come in for a special permit. But yeah, that's all coming back to me now. That actually has a row of garages at the back of it, so that already... I think that there might have been a house a long, long time ago, but when the board considered it, it was a vacant lot with garages on it, and they kept the garages and then added parking. And the board tied it through both special permits to that 505 development, so that parking is for those tenants, which satisfies the requirement within 300 feet, tenants within 300 feet.
So that... Yeah, so the special circumstances that were presented at the time were considered as part of the special permitting process?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I am, thank you.
Ken, did you have something?
Yeah, no, it was, I was just going to point out that, you know, just what Michelle said. You know, it was, there was already existing parking there, and they actually, you know, they didn't knock anything down. They actually really improved the parking there and provided some off-street parking that didn't exist.
Okay. Counselor Spatafor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a question, Michelle. Doesn't our current ordinance require that all required parking without a variance has to be on-site?
Yes, yes. So it does unless it's a pre-existing non-conforming or a conversion or something.
I'm not referring to Pleasant Street, I'm just talking in general right now.
Right, in general, for new construction, parking has to be on-site, off-street, on-site.
Okay. On the parcel?
Yes.
Okay. The second...
Or it won't qualify. The developer can come in and propose it, which is what he did on that other one, say, "I don't have it on-site, but I can provide it somewhere else." And that's up to the board whether he wants to do that. But yeah, the ordinance reads it has to be on the property.
Yeah, because I remember Counsel Crowe had a situation when you were looking at redeveloping on Green Street. You'd never, oh, I'm sorry, maybe the mayor was the counsel at that time, that there was enough parking required there. The Pleasant Street one, I'm a little familiar with because I remember that fire was pretty horrific. The other change there that was exacerbated, because that was built, that was obviously a pre-existing building that was built there, was after that fire, the fire department, I believe, asked the traffic committee to not allow parking on both sides of Highland Ave, excuse me, Pleasant Street. Because at one point, you could park a car on both sides of Pleasant Street from the corner of Pleasant and Highland all the way down to Pleasant in the Fells Way. And it was never a great idea to begin with, but after that fire, I think that was part of the discussion. They were not going to put the one-sided parking there, which is still existence today, which makes it much easier because that's a bus route. Obviously, fire trucks is in this setting, and I think that's one of the reasons why that developer decided to tear down the... Because you're right, I don't think it was a house, when I remember, I don't think there was a house there, there was a set of garages, and they did the off-street parking.
I think they were renting.
Yeah, because there was no parking with that. It was a pre-existing, there was zero parking with that, similar to the one on Maple Street right next to me. I don't know where they park, even if they have cars. I mean, it's amazing to me that they're able to have a building like that, but I think that was one of the other reasons why maybe this board, because I remember that was a discussion, because the developer wanted to keep on-street parking on both sides, but was ultimately decided not to do it, which I think was the best idea for the city.
All set, Counselor?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Counselor O'Dea, is there anything else you'd like to add? Thank you very much. At this point, we'd like to entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
No.
If there's no one else in favor, declare that part of the hearing closed. If, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition to this petition? Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No.
Seeing no one else in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Now, Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please, and recommendation?
Yes, yes. And I will just note, because I just looked this up, 516 Pleasant, so that is an off-site parking lot, but there is still, there are still garages there. There was a bank of garages at the bottom of that property, the back of the property, according to our assessor's records.
If you could take us through your report?
Yes. So you heard from the petitioner, the petitioner's the city council. You heard from the sponsor, Ward Four Counselor. As you heard, the amendment will amend existing use regulations to prohibit off-site parking facilities in the Residence A zoning district. As I mentioned, off-site parking facility is a principal use, so it would have to be the primary purpose of the building structure or lot. We're not talking about big parking lots adjacent to buildings. This is on a separate standalone lot. There's either a garage or a parking lot. So it's its own individual use. So under current zoning, this use is allowed by special permit in the Residence A zoning district and all other zoning districts. I gave you some of the history of zoning, which I won't read into the record, but it's here for your reference. So right now, off-site parking facilities are allowed by special permit in all districts. Under the current ordinance, there are different requirements, however, for residential districts, and then there are ones that are applicable for all districts. So in residential districts, off-site parking facilities are subject to the following requirements. The parking facility shall only be used by residential occupants in areas where existing off-street spaces on residential lots are presently inadequate in number and where the provision of such a facility would improve parking in traffic on adjacent streets. Tenants or users of said facilities shall be limited to residences within 300 feet of the lot as measured along the closest line of access. Vehicles, all vehicles shall be solely for the private or professional use of their owners, and none may be commercial vehicles of more than one-half-ton type of capacity, and then the maximum height shall be no more than 30 feet or two stories. So that's, those specific requirements are if the property's in residential districts, so Residence A, Residence B, Residence C, or residential office. In all other districts, and all the residential districts, so in all the districts for off-site parking facilities, all surfaces used or intended for the use of wheel vehicles shall be paved with an all-weather dust-free pavement. Light shall be provided and located to shield from streets and adjoining properties, compliance with other applicable sections of the ordinance. The Planning Board must find that the facility is not detrimental to the public good. In all districts, landscaped areas shall be provided on-site in accordance with the following. For every parking space, 10 square feet of landscaped space shall be provided on-site. A minimum of 75% of the front yard setback, each side yard setback, and rear yard setback of the parking facilities shall be landscaped with plantings or other permeable landscaping materials. And in all districts, bicycle parking shall be provided on-site in accordance with these formulas. I won't read them there here for your reference. I will note that these particular regulations, I should say, some of these regulations specific to the landscaping and the bicycle parking were recently added. They went through the zoning amendment process, and they were added in 2018. So landscaping requirements and bicycle parking requirements. Some of the other provisions were added over the years. I will, this will be incorporated by reference into the record of the hearing. I won't read them all. But I do want to note the landscaping and bicycle parking because those are fairly new. As I mentioned, off-site parking facilities may be open-air parking lots or parking garages or structures. Approximately 74% of the property in the city is classified as part of Residence A zoning district. I gave you this information for reference. Again, this was only using city assessor's records. So there are 18 properties that are classified as parking lots. Four of them are located in the Residence A zoning district, and there are no properties classified as parking garages. I'll note that the city-owned garages are municipal, so they are exempt, and they have not come under that classification. They would not be subject to the zoning amendment. And then I do know, which has already come up, the parking lot under construction at 11 Cross Street is in Neighborhood Business Zoning District, and it was allowed by special permit by this board. This board is a special permit granting authority for off-site parking facilities. In terms of application and exemptions, the amended ordinance would apply to new lots, new buildings, and construction use of existing, construction use and occupancy of existing buildings on existing lots, unless exempt by state law or a local ordinance, the subject of a building or special permit issued before the first publication and notice of the public hearing on this ordinance, which was July 23, 2021, land part of an approved and endorsed approval not required to definitive subdivision plan or the express language of the amendment. As I mentioned with the last amendment, in accordance with state statute, applications that are in the, applications for permits that are in the processing stage when publication occurs are not protected. However, historically, the city extends that protection in consideration of the petitioner's good faith reliance on the current regulations. So if there were any applications filed prior to the date of first publication and notice of public hearing, we would add language to make sure they would be exempt. There are none. The 11 Cross Street already has a special permit in hand and a building permit. In terms of the effective date, the effective date of the amendment is the date of the city council's vote to ordain the amendment. The city council must act on the amendment within 90 days after the hearing. The final date for action is November 9, 2021, if the public hearing closes tonight on August 11, 2021. Your standard of review, in recommendation of the proposed zoning changes should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. I will note, lack of off-street parking is an ongoing issue in many neighborhoods throughout the city. Current special permit use regulations provide an important option to create parking, and the requirements specific to property in the Residence A and other residential districts provide adequate safeguards. So the recommendation, which was prepared prior to the public hearing, is that the Planning Board recommends to the city council disapproval of the amendment. Again, this is an advisory recommendation you are making to the city council. They would need to decide whether or not to amend the ordinance as proposed.
Very good. Any questions? Patrick Hayes, questions for Michelle?
Yes, thank you. So, Michelle, the way the current zoning ordinance is written, if there is parking in the residence districts, that parking has to support residential occupancies, right?
That's correct.
So hypothetically, so where in zoning where schools are allowed to be located in a residential district, hypothetically, if a school owned a lot of property and wanted to knock down a couple of houses to provide parking, would they be allowed to do that?
So you're talking about a school use which is exempt, so the school, the school use is exempt from use regulations. They would be subject to parking requirements, however. As we heard, though, the parking needs to be provided on-site. But you're talking about a separate lot, a standalone lot.
That the school owns.
That the school owns, that could be proposed for an off-site parking facility.
Correct.
And the answer is, off-site parking facilities in residential districts are subject to these specific requirements. So tenants or users are limited to residences within 300 feet. Businesses can't use them, nobody else can use them. They're limited to that. Now, you would have the option to seek a variance of these requirements. That would have to go through a whole variance process, public hearing, et cetera, before the Board of Appeal. Anybody could petition to vary any of these things, right?
So because the school is exempt from regulations in Residence A, that would not, they would not be able to do the parking by right. There would be a process, some checks and balances in there that we could...
If it was a separate lot, I will note, however, if the lot was merged and became part of the school parcel, the whole property is school use. The same thing would be for a church. Churches are exempt from use regulations. If a church buys, church can go in any district, buys the property, merges the property, it becomes one large parcel, the whole parcel's protected. So I think in that particular scenario, if it's contiguous and continuous, and they can do a merger through an approval not required subdivision, I would say then it's not coming in for a special permit, because it's now part of the property.
Right. Thank you.
You all set, Pat?
Yep.
Counselor O'Malley, did you have something?
Is there a way I can share what's on the screen? I just wanted to show that the parcel across the street from that apartment building that we talked about on Pleasant Street was a home just prior to the 2010 fire. Unless you believe me. Yeah. It would just show right here, so you could see it. I believe probably what happened was it was a multi-year construction process, and by the time it came to the planning board for a special permit, it had already been knocked down for a number of years.
Could look up the decision to find the details.
How do I make it?
You have to plug in your thing. So pick up one of those little pods and plug it in. Once it starts blinking, it should show up on your screen. I have the instructions. And you choose what that program's called.
Do I touch it?
Yeah, I think so.
I got it, I got it.
Okay, hold on.
You can see it?
Yes.
Hold on, we gotta get the projector, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
It's gotta come down first, so hold on one second.
You could see the Google Earth? Really?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I don't...
Is that Pleasant Street?
Oh, there you are. So that's the house. I mean, it's not the greatest-looking house, but...
That's 2007.
Yeah, so that's the last time. I can see you go over here, it's through Google Street View. You click that. So it goes 2007, and then, what is this one? 2012. So somewhere between 2007 and 2012, that house was knocked down. The fire was, oh, you can see the building's gone. In 2012, the building is gone here now. So if my memory serves me correct, this burnt down in 2010. They then bought the property across the street, knocked it all down, and then put an off-site parking facility there. I just don't think it's the highest and best use of our property. And that's, you know, that's all I had to say, thank you.
So you're saying there was a fire, so the house burnt down?
No, no, no. No, the building, the building.
Across the street, or the building burnt down. He's saying that they bought that house.
And knocked it down? Hmm. I can look that up, I can look that up pretty quickly.
This is the house. That's the house. You want me to go to the right?
Yeah, I know exactly where it is.
This is 516 Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
So just hold on one second.
That's the parking. I'll show you today, here, so now I'll show you what it's like today.
Planning board.
Uh-huh, this is like... Then it got knocked down. Don't do anything about a permit, they can figure out everything nowadays. And now this is what it is. I mean, it doesn't look horrible. I just think that when we're having a housing shortage, the question really needs to be, do we want to be knocking down homes?
Yeah, I don't think, I'm just gonna take a break for one second while I look this up. I don't, don't believe this was, they're knocking down a property to put this up. I believe it was a vacant lot when they did the petition. I'm just gonna try to find that decision.
I know it was vacant when they came before us. I just don't know how long it had been vacant. I'm not that familiar with that neighborhood. So, okay, well, thank you for sharing that, Counselor. Does anyone have any other questions? Our recent, Counselor Spatafora?
Nope, no, I hit the button by mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Michelle on her recommendation and staff report?
Okay, I've got it.
Okay, is there a motion then? Patrick Fitzgerald?
I would make a motion to recommend to the City Council disapproval of the amendment.
Okay, Patrick Fitzgerald has made the recommendation, staffed to recommend disapproval of this paper. Ken Antinucci?
I'll second.
Ken second Patrick's motion. Now, let's see if I can get my act together. Antinucci, Chua, Gepersalas. Okay, Michelle?
Nobody wants to hear what I found, okay.
Well, what did you find?
I found that in 2012, when you heard the case, July of 2012, the subject property was the site of a Six Bay, Six Bay Garage, the former site of a Five family that was destroyed by fire in January 2010 and subsequently demolished. So they didn't buy it and demolish it. It was destroyed by fire in January of 2010. Yes. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you, thank you for digging that up.
No, because I don't believe you can...
Cross Street's the same thing, it was destroyed by fire.
Cross Street was destroyed by fire. That's Neighborhood Business, that's a little different. Okay, so well, I'm ready to take the vote. Yes vote is to recommend disapproval.
Yes.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chua?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
To what did you get, Gepersalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Ayovan?
Yes.
So to recommend...
Recommendation will be to the City Council Ordinance Committee not to endorse this paper.
To recommend disapproval.
Recommend disapproval.
You make that in writing, thank you.
Very good, thank you. I believe Counselor Spatafora, if you'd like to adjourn your group. You are more than welcome to stay. I will, give me one second.
Yep. On Counselor O'Malley's motion for the City Council Ordinance Committee to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Crowe, all in favor? All opposed, the Ordinance Committee is adjourned, thank you.
Very, very good, thank you guys for coming out on such a warm evening.
Do you want me to break it out? Nope, the group, the government's signing it tomorrow, thank you.
At some point, I'd like to discuss what you guys thought of this as an alternate setup. Something, because I mean, these things just don't offer a lot of space to squeeze in. Thank you, have a good evening.
What did you think of the setup, Chuck?
Oh, did you? The other option is squeezing in.
No, or it was gonna be to have the table on the floor over to the side, but then you would be kind of over there. Maybe we'll try it over there next time.
Not if they're presenting.
Yeah, they make TV controls up, but we don't.
Okay, well... So it didn't work great, but it helped us. Yeah, I'll talk to Craig afterwards. Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is Community Preservation Committee. No one has contacted Michelle or I, expressing an interest to participate as a representative on the Community Preservation Committee. In the next six weeks, I will be reaching out to you and seeing if there is any support. If not, I will put names in a hat and pull a person's name out to see who our representative will be. We're getting feedback that we should have a representative on the CPC, and they keep asking us whether, when we're going to appoint someone to replace Ken stepping down after four years, three years, however long you want. Eric Henry.
Who is it?
What's that?
How long is it? I'll be your huckleberry, Chuck.
Oh, okay, you would like to be the CPC?
Okay.
Would you, you want? He's volunteering, but I, do you want to think about it, and then we can talk offline, or...
Oh, yeah, okay, thanks, Chuck.
He doesn't want the hat, then.
Thanks, I'll think about it, I'll...
In two weeks, we're coming back in two weeks.
There you go, perfect.
If you think about it, talk it over with your family, and, because the one thing I will say is that when Ken did it, there was a lot of meetings and stuff, but that wasn't a setup. And I'm hoping that they've got some rigor and procedures and things like that. But think about it, talk it with your family, and in a couple of weeks, if you're still interested, we'd certainly love to have you represent us.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, that went better than I thought.
I think they all were remote, too, they're all, they all...
Oh, do they? I don't know. I almost wanted to pick online, on camera, pick out of the hat.
The plans. Who didn't take the plans and now wants the plans? So this is, it's a very important traffic information and important information about the project. So this is, they just, like I said, they just submitted this. This is specific to 735.
Thank you.
And now I also have the plans, if anybody wants the plans. If not, I will bring them and give them to you next week. Anybody that already talked about it, please remember this part.
No, no changes, right, Michelle? Michelle, no changes to the plans?
There were changes to the plans, so...
Since you handed them out?
Not since I handed them out last time. So those are the plan, those are the plans, right? The bigger, not the ones that were folded up, they're bound with the black. Does anybody want the plans tonight? If not, I'll bring them.
I have them already.
Anybody, okay. At the very least, take a look at, take a look at this. This is important, response to the peer review and a lot of additional information about the project. I am gonna ask if they make this part of their presentation, but if anybody, you know, wants to review them, they are... Does it include the river stuff? I haven't received final papers. The river, Malden River, all the amendments we just did. So that doesn't include that. And if anybody else wants it, I can either email it to them. I do have a couple extra copies, too, if anybody wants. Okay.
Okay, so next meeting is the 25th. We only have 735 on at the moment?
That's all that's on it, and that, nothing else except one traffic study waiver.
Okay, yeah, and we'll need to do that.
Yes. We've got no other hearings, only one hearing.
And then our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 8, which will be two days after Labor Day. If that means anything to anyone. So that will be our next regularly scheduled meeting, and there's a few things banging around in the pipeline, but nothing definite yet.
Well, I think we have two definites now.
Okay.
I should say complete. There's a lot, as you said, that's half already. I believe that right now, there were two that are complete, so...
Okay.
We need to get those processed this week, so I'll be sending out the agenda in the next couple of weeks, or I'll give it to you on the phone.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Michelle, do you have anything? Does anyone else have anything? And we will see you all in two weeks. And we will see you all in two weeks. Thank you very much. Seconded by anyone? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Who made that motion?
Diane Chua made the motion.
And who seconded it?
Eric Henry.